This is November 7, 2018. Meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. And I would like to make one addition to it. It relates to the decision we have about sites. Ron Lamar is here to talk to us about the site study that was done. And we have some information in the folder about that. But I think to hear from him about whether the tests demonstrate that the current building, that the current site is a buildable site. So with that change, I would like to just have that right after the approval of the minutes if that's agreeable to people. So he doesn't have to sit through a long part of our meeting.
As fascinating as that would be.
So I'm wondering with that change whether I can have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
Our motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise is her second. Second by Brian. All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Public comment?
Hi, how are all of you tonight? I'm Lauren Selig. I live right around the corner here in Durham. And I came to speak with you guys for a few different reasons. I wrote myself a list so I wouldn't forget. I'll try to be pretty quick. The first is that I have a, one of my two children is an eighth grader at the middle school. And she's getting a lot of really great opportunities in school. But one of the things that I really have yet to understand is why we've got a significant lack of cohesion between the two elementary schools in the district, between the different teams in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so far as I can tell, that there's not consistency across the board about what curriculum is covered, what material is covered. I learned recently that the Mastway Elementary School has a student council. I thought that was great. But, you know, there wasn't one at Mohermet during the time my kids were there, and there's not, as far as I can tell, one at the middle school. And I'm just confused why there's so little coherence across the district. And I'm hoping that can get modified in some way to make it, you know, better. The other is that I know we're on our year two of the new grading system, and we've added exemplary, which my kids tell me their teachers often forget exists as a new standard. And I'm under the impression the whole goal of this program was to try to alleviate the stress caused by having traditional grades of A, B, C, D, and potentially failing. And what I can say is that for my kids, the new grading system is far more stressful. They really have no understanding of where they're really being successful and where they're struggling. They're aware of where they're not meeting standards. But they're not ever clear on when they're really doing their best work and really showing their absolute best. One of my two children would be incredibly motivated by having an honor roll. And she hears about friends in other districts who are very excited about having reached honor roll in their district. And she's like, well, Mom, what is that? And why don't I have that? And so it's a problem, you know, that we don't have ways to really honor and recognize the kids who regularly go above the standards. The third issue, and this relates back to the curriculum, is that she's brought up to me several times, she's so frustrated by the fact that kids can be accelerated in math. One of our neighbors in sixth grade started going to the high school for accelerated math curriculum classes, which is great. My daughter is not a math scholar. However, she's really accelerated in language arts and reading, and in fifth grade tested at reading at the 12th grade level, and is bored to tears in her English classes regularly. If she has to read the short story or the novel "Hackett" for the fifth year in a row, I think she might pull her hair out. She doesn't have a lot left, but she might pull it out. And so, you know, I don't understand, and she doesn't understand, why there's not a clear way for her to take accelerated courses at the high school, why nobody's ever said to her, oh, you're really great at language arts. We're going to accelerate you. We get, you're going to do regular math at your school at the appropriate level. And why there's such a disparity between treating kids who are excellent at math and really accelerating them. And her view was that the school district only cares about math and sports. So, coming from her lips. The other thing, and this is something I sent you guys a letter about earlier in the year, is the challenge of, there's really in our district, a lot of ignorance about diversity. And I don't just mean, I know last year there was the whole program about talking about people of color and people whose family dynamics don't necessarily fit whatever standard we're supposed to have. But I sent you guys a copy of the letter that I sent to my daughter's teachers about the upcoming Jewish holidays that happened in September. Jay was great about, and I do appreciate that, Jay, about calling me to follow up and talk more about that. Even with that, and I didn't end up calling Jay back to follow up because I just have been so beyond upset about the way things happen. But one of my kids came home on Yom Kippur after I sent that letter, after I talked to Jay, after all of that work, with four hours of homework. Four hours of homework on Yom Kippur, which I had specifically said she wouldn't be able to do any work during that time. And she cares so much about being successful at school and is so focused on it that while she fasted, she left synagogue early to come home and spend four hours working on her homework so she wouldn't be behind at school. And, you know, that's, there's something wrong with a kid feeling like she's going to be in trouble for observing her religious heritage. And I recognize there's not a lot of Jewish kids in the community. I know that. I know there's not a lot of Muslim kids in the community. But I also know they have a hard time at their holidays as well. I know other people do. One thing I mentioned to Mr. Sullivan is maybe we need to do his type of forum where we bring in families who don't fit the white Christian model and talk about how that impacts us, whether it's kids speaking or whether it's adults speaking, to educate the teachers on what that impact really is on families, because it's been very hard. You know, eight years, I've sent the same letter to teachers, eight years, nine years, including kindergarten, and nine years continued to have events get scheduled on those days. It's really, really hard. Really hard to justify to my kids why they're having so many pressures. My final thing is a recommendation. Yesterday, it was great that the high school was closed. We had record-breaking turnout at the polls yesterday. According to my husband, we had 50% more voters yesterday than in any other midterm election, which is pretty incredible. I would say that one idea that I want to pitch to you guys for the next major election in two years is rather than closing all the districts, schools in the district, is just to close the high school. But to take the freshmen and have them do some kind of service Palooza day like they do at the middle school, and take the sophomores and juniors out and do college tours with them, and take the seniors maybe over to UNH and do a whole fair day about how to pay for college, or how, what other options there are besides college if they're not in, you know, college-bound kids. So that it's still being used as an academic day, gets them out of the building so that the town can continue to use it for the, well, we had 6,700 voters, I believe, yesterday to keep everybody safe, but as a way to have them continue to have an academic day that day. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the October 24, 2018 regular meeting minutes? Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, is there's a second? Brian? Are there changes? Hearing none? Oh, ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, the minutes are approved. So now I think we have the spot for Ron, so if you'd like to come up and?
Hi, everyone. So I'm Ron Lamar from La Valley Brenzinger Architects. And since we met last, the school board has gone out and gotten a geotechnical engineer to go to the existing site and dig some test pits. We've also flagged all of the wetlands on the property and confirmed.
In their packets, they have John Turner's memo.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't read it, so.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, really, the gist of the memo was to put together some information so that we, as the architectural team, Bowin Corporation as the contractor, and our structural engineer, as well as John Turner Consulting, could really come back and address the issues that were raised at the last meeting, which was, there were some issues with an addition and renovation project back in the '90s. Is this site actually buildable? So the short answer is yes. And then we can talk about some details if you like. Just a couple big picture things. The one thing you got going for you with this project, which obviously was different from the '90s, is this is a standalone new building, what we're talking about. So you're not tied into any floor levels, if you will. You're not tied into any particular location, like how does it actually connect to the building? So because of that, and because obviously you can see in the memo that there is ledge on the site, as someone pointed out, we have the opportunity to do foundations completely differently as a standalone building. We can take advantage of the ledge by sitting the building on top of the ledge and bringing some dirt up, if you will, as opposed to drilling down and digging out the ledge. So there's lots of different opportunities that we have. The great news is there's ledge, which means your geothermal system is going to be far more efficient. So if you had less ledge on a site, for instance, you'd have to drill more wells to get the certain amount of bore length that you need for heating and cooling in a facility. We haven't done exhaustive explorations yet in terms of how dense the rock is, or where the building would actually go on the site. Because we wanted to get back to you with the information of, is there anything about the site that would scare us into saying that really it's not a buildable site? I'll give you an example of that. We've had sites before where there's a lot of clay. Clay can absorb moisture, and at times of the year, it gets very dense, it gets very soupy. That's a scary proposition. So most times, that becomes an expensive site, aside from GOPers or other things. So I think what John Turner's report shows, and what we've been able to do, meaning La Valley Brenzinger, our structural engineer, and Bowin Corporation, was to look at this and say, there's nothing that would lead us to say that this is not a buildable site.
So questions about, well, that was the question we posed. So we have questions for Ron? So just in terms of process, once you say, this is where we're going to, this is a footprint of the building that we anticipate building, I anticipate then there's much more densely, you know, located borings to make sure that on that particular footprint, things are workable. Is that the way it goes?
Correct. So what we would do is, as we started our visioning sessions, the visioning sessions are really for us to listen to the community. It's not for us to talk about our ideas or what we think. We'd like to know what you think. So as we continue those, we're going to get to a point where we are going to start talking about how would the building fit onto the site? Where are those limits in terms of the wetland? Where is the property line? How far away from the existing school do we need to stay so that you can actually occupy and operate the school during construction? And so at that point, we would start, you know, basically generating some kind of footprint or some kind of layout of what we would consider the buildable area, you know, like we're going to stay within these limits right here. And then to your point, what we would do in cooperation with, as we're designing the footprint of the building, come in and drill some deep borings. Those deep borings would tell us exactly what we're, what we're looking at. They would also tell us the density of the rock, which would then determine how do we actually sit on that rock? How do we connect to it? How do we, you know, address that? The other thing that we would do is drill a test well. And Jim was able to, in his maintenance records, he, you actually have an 800, like 825-foot well on the site right now that you use for lawn irrigation. So we've actually reached out to the geothermal engineer just this afternoon to say, is there any way, you know, we could use that well, if you will, to get information on the, on the ground, on the earth? In other words, what is that heat transference that's going to happen if we were to put a well in there? If they can do that, then we would come out and check that out. If they couldn't do that, then we would come in and actually drill a well, then put in, you know, the pipes that you would see in a, in a geothermal well, and we would do some testing. And that would give us the heating and cooling capacity of the rock itself. All rock is different. So you can get some solid rock, you can get rock that have fissures through it with groundwater. And remember, we're not touching the groundwater. But as that rock gets looser, the conductivity, I believe is the word, of the heat and cooling loss is different from well to well. So we would want to get that information because we also want to locate a well field as part of the project.
Right.
Does the amount of ledge, does it make a big difference in the cost of the building? Or is it, I mean, I know it has pluses and minuses, but does it make a big difference depending on how much ledge you find?
Well, the good news is, as you can see in the report, there's not a lot of outcroppings, right? So you're going down two feet just to begin with. So the goal here is to take out as little as possible. For instance, if we end up, if there's a big flat area where we're going to put the footprint of the school, then that whole school would sit on top of the ledge, and we'd build a grade up around it. And when the old school comes down, if you look at the road that accesses right in front of the main entrance, it's high up, and then your road, your land actually slopes down to the back parking lot in the field. And what we're thinking is, well, if we go up over here, then really it's the same elevation from here to here. So the idea is to limit the amount of rock that needs to come out. So, and that was the contractor's feeling as well. You know, why, why drill through rock if you don't have to? If it were an addition renovation project, and you were trying to make the first floors line up, or the second floors line up, you really have no choice, right? You have to figure something out there where it just becomes very difficult. And, you know, lots of times, the answer is, you got to dig out the rock, or move the addition further away from the building with ramps.
Ron, can you tell us the next step, the next steps in terms of what you're going to be doing in the immediate future?
Yep. So we had two great visioning sessions, and thank you for everybody who could attend. We gained lots of information from everybody, from the students to the selectmen from the towns. So, and everybody in between, obviously, the educators, and we had parents there. What we've done in terms of listening is sort of written down what everybody said, which is significant about the school, and I think we went through this last time. Now what we need to do is bring those findings back to a small focus group, made up of representatives of all of those different groups that we had met with over the two days, to determine, did we listen, you know, did we hear what you wanted us to hear? You know, sometimes somebody says tomato or tomato, and we're writing it down. We want to make sure that it's a tomato, it's a tomato. And so we're going to present that to everybody in a few hours of a workshop. The next few hours will be, now that we're confident that we've listened and we've got everybody's thoughts on paper, we're going to ask to answer several questions. And we've submitted those questions back when we did the first workshops. And those questions have to do with really, what is Oyster River Middle School going to be? You know, how are you going to address the educational future of technology? How are you going to be able to address the future of curriculum? How are you going to be able to address the social, emotional learning aspects into the future? And so those questions are really important because once we design this school, we want to do it so that it's adaptable and flexible into the future. And we don't want to dictate, like, what you should be doing. We'll tell you if you're going down the wrong road, you know, with bars and prisons and things like that. But I think what we really want to be able to say is, for one thing, we learned that there's an incredible music program here, right? So your school, right off the bat, if you were to say to me, okay, start, I would think, well, the big theme is going to be music. But there may actually be a lot more to that, and a lot more in terms of the underlying parts and pieces of how this whole thing goes together. And that's what the next big workshop is about. Once that happens, we're going to put together a document for you all to see what we did, how we did it, the information we gathered, and the conclusions we came to. And the conclusions are really, how do those questions get answered? And that's the second part of the workshop, is to go over those questions with everybody, talk about the concept of answering those questions, like, what do people really think? And then we put together what I'm talking about, is this draft piece that says, this is now the vision. So this is what Oyster River Middle School is really going to be like in the future. That's when we sit down with all of the focus group of educators and students to really talk about what is fifth grade, what is sixth grade, how does the environment start to organize itself around all the pieces with that vision in mind.
So Ron, I just want to share with the board, that report back to the visioning group is no ever 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then, once Ron has done that piece, we'll bring him back and share those results to the school board on December 5.
And we can go to that meeting on the 18th.
And you're more than welcome to go to the meeting on the 19th, if you can attend. That would be great. But you're going to get a special board report to you on the 5th, so if you can't make it, you'll get it on the 5th.
Where is that meeting, where is this going?
It's going to be at the middle school in the multipurpose room.
Just one question about, we talked a little bit today, we had a meeting earlier today. And part of the land slopes down toward the marsh area, which I think in our discussions, you saw that as a challenge, but also possibly as an opportunity in terms of envisioning this school. You know, I wonder if you could say something about that aspect of the site, that, you know, there is this sloping down toward the, toward the marsh area?
Yeah. So the great thing is, is you've got this great marsh down there. And it's a wonderful little environmental or ecological, educational opportunity for the students, right? So how do you get from the level of the ball field that's there now with the fence going around it? How do you get down there? And so our team was talking about possibly terracing, you know, down that hill, whether that terrace is part of the building itself, or whether that terrace is outdoor space. One of the things that came up during the visioning was the importance for outdoor space and be able to let the children run around, allow them to have recess without buses driving through and everything else. And the nice thing about that is depending on how we do those terraces, how do we integrate that hill into the building? So it's number one, it's something nobody else has, right? It's very special to Oyster River. And number two, it takes care of really the social and emotional needs of the students to get out, get some exercise, get out onto the, into the ecology, I guess you would call it, of the site. Maybe the science aspect is right off of that area, so you can have indoor sort of outdoor science, indoor/outdoor eating. So there's really a lot of opportunity for that hill, not to say that, you know, we're just going to completely stay away from the hill and ignore it. Because it really does create a nice little bowl, which is very secure, actually. So you really don't need fences for any kind of playground if you have this nice sort of bowl, if you will, that people can sort of terrace down into and feel safe and secure.
I mean, I think that's one of the concerns I heard, that you'd have a, the potential to have a really large retaining wall, very high retaining wall, forming that, which would be kind of unsightly.
So, but that's a great, a great thought, you know, like, how do we address that hill? How do we make it part of the project? Not be scared of it, but embrace it, without having to build big, tall retaining walls. Sometimes big, tall retaining walls are okay. We did a nice war memorial, actually, on one site, and had a 10-foot-high retaining wall. Kind of killed two birds with one stone. So, but I don't see that here. I think, you know, you get a great opportunity to step down that hill into the, into the wetlands.
Does that, the test pits you've already done, does, is it that test or other ones down the road that'll allow you to know if you, if that land can actually handle the weight of a large building like that?
Yeah, and we'll definitely be looking into that.
Okay. But the test pits don't tell that, it's when you do the boring and all that.
No, the test pits don't tell that right now. Nope.
Is that a concern, or is that?
No, because we know there's rock there. You know? I mean, I think what the test pits tell us is that the rock pretty much goes across and then heads downhill. The question is, how far and how fast does it, does it head downhill? And how do we take advantage of that to tie in everything we're doing, you know, to the stability of the rock? So, lots more to investigate, obviously. This is, you know, it's a kind of a blue-sky speaking right now, right? So we've got lots of ideas, lots of things that we can do. We just got to find the most cost-effective way of getting the biggest bang for your buck.
Other questions? Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome. All right, thank you.
Okay, announcements, commendations, comments from the district?
Jay Rashad, principal of the middle school, I just wanted to briefly talk about, we did our first time ever student-led conferences yesterday from about 7:30 in the morning till 7:30 at night. As Dr. Morris, I was so enthused how well it went due to the work of our staff and students. Numerous positive compliments from parents throughout the day. No parking tickets issued, like in pass open houses. But I just want to share with the board how, you know, how well it went, particularly for a first time we've done something like this. And we will be reaching out to parents shortly to get feedback in terms of what went really well, and what did they like, and also ways we can improve that experience for everyone. Thank you.
I just wanted to speak a little bit about our teacher workshop yesterday. We had a wonderful day. It was a faculty-led day for faculty. And I just want to thank John Bromley and Nick Ricciardi for leading that day. We have some exciting things happening with collaboration and teacher teaming going on that will continue throughout the school year, and that's teacher-led. And we also had some SEL activities led by Nick Ricciardi and the Exercise Physiology and Wellness Department with faculty. And it was great to see them building towers with pasta, tape, and marshmallows, and doing some really fun activities together and bonding as a faculty.
Thank you. Announcements, are there more from the district? From the board?
So I just wanted to follow up as well, and thank the school district for all they did in terms of the election yesterday. I mean, I know that we talked about alternative sites, and people talked about, I've heard talk about, why don't we have a polling place on UNH's campus? But what people forget is that democracy runs on volunteerism. And yesterday was extraordinary. There was over 1,650 same-day registrations occurring. I don't know if you've ever seen somebody register a young college student coming in, which there were droves of, but it was machine-like. And I was sitting at a table with another, with a resident advisor from UNH, and for four hours, we were cranking out two at a time. And it's just an extraordinary process. I cannot see how we would have done it in another location. So it's a great opportunity, or a great thing that the district did for us, so thank you.
I think so. And if I could follow up on that, I was lucky enough to be a volunteer in the evening hours, maybe coming to 5:30, and probably left the school after 10:00. And there's a real big infrastructure that is put up for the election. And as we were there, you know, polls had closed two and a half hours ago, and we're reconciling the vote, our custodial staff is repurposing that room to a gym. And I just hope that maybe formally we could extend the thank you, as they were taking the blue padding off of the floor, then there's all the boating kind of loose, and they're just working there, taking that down. And it was a great effort for all the people who volunteered, but also what the school provided as well.
Are you suggesting that I formally acknowledge the custodial staff?
I think they were just, it's a whole extra job that they had.
Be glad you do that.
And they did it great, so.
Brian Sisneros, myself, Jim, and Jim Rizicky visited Keene Middle School, which is a new middle school, and we visited the middle school section of Bedford. So we took a day trip, and it was really interesting to see, particularly at Keene, so many of the elements we've been talking about, multiple spaces, really kind of expertly-designed team areas, having like the library be central, the music space, having little nooks where you might have two students kind of just meet, and all in this really open space. I mean, it's really interesting to see that. Bedford, I think, had some limitations because they were building a middle school and a high school together, so combining those two on a fairly small property, and they couldn't do quite as much as Keene could do, in my view. But still, wonderful teaching spaces, you know, bigger, big classrooms. So it was, I don't know, Brian, your reaction was, but I thought it's really interesting just to see these possibilities, and maybe if any of you want to, you know, join, join the field trip at some point, it's really interesting.
It was good because the new schools, as you would, they're not institutional, like very, like, they don't have corridors, they're much more open spaces. Every nook and cranny was used effectively. Most important was the storage. We have, for example, they have a beautiful auditorium in Keene, it seats about almost 1,000. Looks almost like ours, but just newer. But the difference being is underneath all those steps, like stairs, seats, I'm sorry, that we all have, is a huge storage room. And every department has their own area of storage. And it was just, they said that was a lifesaver because, you know, science has their area, you know, the physical education has their area, you know, there's props for the place, there's, you know, it was just, every square inch felt like it was effectively used. And, and it was, that was pretty cool, I thought, because it was so much wasted space in, in your schools, you see now, they're just square and everything, and this was actually very efficiently used.
And to point to Patty's made a number of times, just the sunlight, the light that came in. came in from, you know, from above, you know, in the library and other places, it's just really well-lit by natural light, so, really interesting possibility.
And I remember, I think both of you, did you go up to Hanover last year?
Yeah.
And looked at schools, and it's very exciting, and I wonder, I don't know if it's meaningful, but it's an issue to get the public to approve building a new school. And maybe in these communities too, another piece of the road trip is kind of learning their process on how they were able to develop that community support, you know, and what that endeavor went, and maybe that would help us with our process as well.
That was part of the conversation.
We talked about that some, yeah.
That's actually, early in the conversation, that was the part we discussed.
I think in Keene, they got eight, a vote of 80%, so I mean, top of building support for it. Because I think the other, the other building was condemned or something. I mean, there's some, some kind of incentive.
Yeah, but thank you for doing that, that's great.
Real pleasure. So I think we want to make, we've asked Ron for some suggestions of buildings that he's worked on, and so, so we're, I think, gonna keep.
So as we set up other field trips, we can let board members know, and if it's something that you can fit into your schedule, you're welcome to join and, and so forth.
And Aramark paid for lunch, so, so we're good.
Wow. Other comments? Okay, Assistant Superintendent report, no? Okay, so Jim?
Just a few. I did want to point out that, in a surprise, we had put in for grant money for mo haramit, and once they went through the first round, there was very little money left, and we thought we wouldn't get any money for mo haramit. Turns out that they had $2 million left, and they decided to give all the schools who didn't get anything from the first round $100,000. So as we consider tomorrow, the budget, this $100,000 is actually approved and can be used against a mo haramit project, so I wanted to share that with the board.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
So the letter says that the award must be claimed by April 1st of next year. What does that mean? Is there, is there a restriction on when the project needs to be completed?
No, well, there is a restriction when it can be completed, Michael, but Sue actually followed through on that because she had the same immediate concern you did. And it's an issue of commitment, and so...
Put an extension.
Yes, put in for an extension. Yeah, thanks, Sue. So that's really great news. Denise asked me if I would chase after some comparables. Ron sent us a bunch of comparables in terms of the cost of various schools, and, and that memo is in your packet. I also, at the bottom, added the cost of Dover High School and the renovation in addition to New Market to kind of give you a reference point. So I think that was just there, is a matter of touching base, does 45, $46 million sound like the right price? And if you look down through that list, it, it does feel like it's an appropriate cost for a brand-new middle school for 120,000 square feet. So that, that's in your packet, that's a follow-through for, for the question that Denise asked. You also have a letter in your packet from Chief Curz related to traffic safety, and the Traffic Safety Committee that he is on took a position against the Goss property. They had concerns about a host of issues that are in that memo, so that, that is there for your review. And we've moved the dedication of Mastway from next week to December 5th. We had a meeting yesterday, and if we have the meeting next week, then the classrooms, though the classrooms would be finished, the front entrance wouldn't be. But more importantly, Carrie felt that when you came, you should see the classrooms decked out as classrooms, not just empty shelves or halls of classrooms. So we moved it to the 5th. We are inviting the select people from Lee, of course. But then I had an inquiry from our local state delegation about whether they could attend, and so we're going to invite the representatives and the state senator who support our region. We also are inviting the commissioner and the governor. This money, this front entrance money of $560,000 was really unusual for Oyster River to receive. And when the governor and commissioner decided to put safety dollars forward, they did it in a way that allowed us to compete for the grant money, and so when we do this dedication, they've been invited. I also would share with you that if, should the governor not be able to attend, you know, a December meeting, I certainly would adjust to his schedule and at least show him the product of his good work in terms of putting the safety dollars forward. So, you know, we, this, the 5th will be, I think it's a big deal for the town of Lee and for the district. I know that it's a relatively modest overall upgrade to the facility, but it just makes the building so much more safer and far more flexible for district use as we move into the future. And I wanted to, quite frankly, highlight the, the good work that, that we've done and, and the efforts the state went through in, in making sure that districts even like Oyster River, who generally don't qualify for state funds over and above, put it to good use, so. December 5th is the day, and we'll have a whole bunch of people there besides ourselves, and we'll try to make it a event.
So does that mean next week we'll be here?
Next week we'll be here.
Got it.
Any questions about any of that?
Great.
Yes, Denise?
Just to thank you for those comparison schools, I just think that's useful information moving forward, and when the community says, you know, what about this much money? I just think it's really helpful, so thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, guys.
Mrs. Semir, sue?
First thing, I just wanted to see if there's any questions on the status of the current year budget. I did notice that the titles are all off. They say 1718, it is 1819's budget, and they are the right totals. This is the first pass where we've encumbered all of our staff. It does not include athletics and co-curricular, we did that this week, and it also flushes out anything that doesn't look right, which as you can see, retirement was over-budgeted, and that doesn't make sense. We've since fixed that. And if I compare this to last year, it's right in line with where we were at the same time last year.
Okay. Questions?
Okay, and then the other thing I have is the tuition rate, the standard calculation we do every year. This is to provide it to the town for the UNH Forest Park students, and then it's for, I think we have just one student that a staff member requests attend here that we charge a third to, and if anyone else attends Oyster River outside of a tuition agreement, that's the rate we use. I use the standard form.
Do you need approval of this rate, or?
Yes, I do need your approval for this.
Do we have a motion to approve these rates?
So I would move that we accept as the rates for tuition students. Elementary school, $18,916. Middle school, $17,732. And high school, $18,394.
Moved by Kenny, is her second? Second by Michael? Questions for her?
Yes, I have.
Yeah.
The only question I had was the, was it the elementary costing more than the high school, which seemed odd to me?
Enrollment, it's a, it's a result of enrollment. I mean, if you look at the numbers at the elementaries, they've gone down, and I do, I do look at that and wonder what's going on there, and that's, that's what it is, it's the enrollment figure we use.
With those small kindergarten classes, right?
Yep, okay, yeah, okay, yep.
The only thing I would add is UNH's decommissioning Forest Park.
Yeah, they still wanted it this year, though.
I know, it's like, I think it's June of next year, like that, so that will no longer exist.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we have motion to second, right, on this? Now ready to vote? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor.
Thank you.
Those rates are approved. Thank you. Student Senator report?
Yeah. Okay, so tonight was the World Language Festival. The French and Spanish classes, levels three and up, all presented their plays. I just did mine right before coming here. It was a lot of fun. It's always one of my favorite nights of the year. There's lots of culturally appropriate food. Kids make Spanish and French food to bring, to get points on their midterms. I wrote the program for my play to get a point. And Monday was winter sports meeting night, so, you know, basketball, ski, hockey, swimming, indoor track, I think that's all. Everyone met in the auditorium as a large group and then split off to listen to their coaches talk and have individual group meetings, I should say. The fall play is going on next week, the night of the 15th, 16th, and 17th at 7:00 every night. I think that's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I believe. That's really exciting, it's gonna be really good. College applications, I mentioned last time, the November 1 deadline has passed, so some people are able to sort of sit back on their heels for a couple weeks before applying to scholarships. But people who are applying to November 15 deadlines are still working hard, editing essays and getting their FAFSA done and all. More exciting news is that Coffee House is this Thursday, the quarterly event. It's at 5:45, I believe, $5 for admission, and then food and music once you get in. I highly recommend it, it's a lot of fun. And as I mentioned last time, quarter one was about to end, it has now ended. There's always a flurry of activity right before the end of the quarter, so it's nice to have that over as well. Yeah, it's been busy around here.
Questions for her?
Okay, so we're ready for the presentation on a one-to-one? Jay Rashad, principal again at the middle school. I had Jordan Zercher, she works for the Muth River, come down and meet with me today to ask questions about the one-to-one rollout, and one of the questions was, you know, Mr. Rashad, do you have any regrets? And I, I said, I do have one, I wish I'd thought of doing this several years ago. I have my two superstars here in terms of why this rollout went exceptionally well. The word I like to use that they probably get sick of is seamless. I don't see how it really have, it could have gone any better than it did, and it's, you know, a great reflection of the kind of work. Nick Bellows, my school librarian, and Nico Vines, my tech integrator, do, and I'll turn it right over to them. Thank you.
First, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to give you this update. It's, it's been an exciting first quarter of the school year, and the addition to the devices has just made a huge impact, I think, on all of our lives in the school, particularly the kids. So I, I just want to talk about the initial getting the devices into the kids' hands, and we did that over the first three days of school. We got almost 700 devices out across all four grade levels. The process was pretty standardized across all three grade levels, sorry, four. Eighth graders came in on the first day, and Nico delivered a presentation that talked with them about responsible use and how to care for the devices, and what this was gonna mean for them on a day-to-day basis. And then the kids proceeded to come over, and they would get their device in their bag, and we used the library catalog system to keep track of the inventory, so it's really easy for us to be able to tell who has what device, and that also helps us when we need to maybe loan a kid a device when we're doing some troubleshooting. I wanted to make sure I didn't miss any of the major stuff here. Also, the last part of that process, as far as getting kids to the devices, was we created a, a form for the kids to bring home and have a conversation with their families about what this device means to them and how they need to take care of it, and what responsible use looks like. And once the kids returned those forms, they were able to take the devices home. And we got those forms back pretty quickly. I think the kids wanted to be able to take those devices home. So, yeah, it went really well, again, you know, in three days to get almost 700 devices out. I'm not sure if we could have done anything to make that happen faster or smoother, it went really well. Nico's gonna talk more about what's happening with the devices now that we have them, so I'll turn it over to her.
Hey there. So how it's going? Honestly, our students have been incredibly responsible with these devices so far. We have very few students that come in having forgotten them at home. I mean, thinking, thinking about the fact that there's 675 going home every day, we only about dispersed about like one or two loners a day for students that forgot them at homes, that's less than 1%. So it's pretty incredible. Even the fifth graders, honestly, they're, they're the strongest showing of students that remember them every day. We haven't had a lot in the way of damage. When you have 700 devices, you're bound to have a few defects, so we did have some factory things that had to go back and they, Dell replaced them, but we've only had five devices damaged out of 700 so far after quarter one. So again, less than 1%, and they were really, truly accidents. And I think that that's bound to happen as well when you have a new system in place. Also, we do have to give a lot of credit to Josh and his team. I mean, when you guys voted this, a yes on this, the amount of work that they had to do up until this point to get them, you know, unboxed and ready to go, and then stacked in my office, and then dispersed, they were a huge part of why the rollout went so smoothly, and we could do that in three days. We have implemented protocols of student forgets a device at home, or if for some reason it's damaged and they need to receive a loner. The majority of students we find are charging them overnight at home, but we are allowing the students to choose to keep them at school, and there are designated places in their classroom for them to charge if that's the case. And teachers have come up with a lot of team strategies to communicate with students about the devices. We've had a couple whole-team meetings if there's an issue, but also just something as simple as signage outside of each of their doors to allow the students to simply see while they walk by, do I need my device for class today? If not, leave it in your locker. If you need it for your next class and you won't have time to get to your locker, put it under your seat or somewhere safe in the, in the classroom. But just some quick visuals so a student knows and they're not wondering if they need it for the class that day. And we have a new student tech team, it's the first at O R M S. We had an application process, we had many students, 25 students apply, which seems low, but I was really excited about it. And we ended up selecting 12 students who are gonna start getting trained and start helping out with some initiatives, school-wide initiatives, the first being some PSAs about proper device usage in some fun ways, and also our hour of code that's coming up. So that's some of the exciting stuff. As far as PD with staff, we have a building-level staff technology committee, some of who presented here last year. We have reps from every grade level and specialty, as well as special ed. We have created goals for this year at the building level. Goal number one was to plan and provide continuous PD in a variety of formats. Goal two was to do a 360 survey of staff, students, and parents by April, to see how things are going and what we need to improve on and what things they really love about this initiative. And then goal number three was to research and suggest revisions to some of the current technology policies to fit the new one-to-one structure. Maybe just looking around at other schools that are one-to-one and see how the, some of their policies are phrased, especially in the way of responsible use versus acceptable use. Every teacher workshop day with the exception of yesterday includes a tech hour, so we provide multiple different tools that teachers can come learn about. They get to choose which session they attend, but they're all pretty much expected to attend a session. And the last one we did was really successful. And in October, we launched the O R M S pineapple chart. We kind of alluded to that last year when we threw out our pitch. Basically, teachers sign up when they're using a really creative, or doing a really creative project in the classroom, and they want to open their doors and say aloha to their fellow teachers to just come in and, you know, grab a snack in the back, or prep in the back of the classroom and be a passive observer of the things that are actually actively going on in the classroom. Because I can stand in front of 60 teachers and tell them that a tool is really cool and they're really gonna engage their students, but until they see their students using it, and what, how they use it, and how they expand upon it, it's actually truly a much bigger form of PD. And it's lent to actually teachers signing up for things that don't even include tech, so the art teacher invited teachers into her room to see some of the projects they were working on, and it's kind of opened a sense of collegiality about teachers feeling like they can just walk through each other's classes. When the pineapple lights are on, you're welcome in, aloha. So we also are using a little bit of time during future curriculum meetings for subject-specific technology discussions and sharing across subject-specific teachers from fifth to eighth grade. So, any questions?
Just before you get questions, just want to remind the board that at the next meeting, Nico and Sue Leifer and... Nico and, uh, Sue Leifer and Sarah and Celeste will be doing another version of this, but in terms of how the technology is influencing our curriculum and our pedagogy in the classrooms. So tonight was steering away from that so Nico didn't have to repeat herself next week.
Question. Um, I know even before Jay's email came out the other day, I mean, there's been issues with kids finding ways to play games and everything on the computers and accessing other ways through other portals or what have you. Has there been any headway on trying to get control?
Yep, so as soon as a parent or anyone brings something like that to our attention, so for example, the Candy Crush thing happened at the beginning of the year where they were finding a way to download that from the Microsoft Store. Josh and his guys were super responsive about that and shut that down within two days. So as the kids kind of flex their muscles and kind of find ways to do things, our tech T, our IT department is really on top of it. Um, as soon as it's brought to our attention, we address it. Um, and they've already found a solution for some Chrome extension stuff that we're gonna start implementing on Friday, so testing out.
What about when they're in the classroom and they're not, I mean, are they, they're being monitored from the teacher?
Oh, yeah.
Where are they, you know, if they're, I mean, I know we talked about a program where this teacher's looking at it and if they're off where they're supposed to be, it'll go to the top and they'll...
Yeah, um, we do have a filtering system. Our teachers haven't been trained on that yet, but our teachers are really good about using like kind of their eyeballs and making sure they're circulating the classroom. I mean, when they're using the technology, they're engaging with the lesson and with each other. So the teachers are aware of what's going on when they're in the classroom. I'm pretty confident. I mean, do you?
Yeah, I mean, we have smart kids, so they're gonna try to find ways, things that they can do. Keep in mind, like, the Chrome extension games they're playing, it's like, you know, Donkey Kong and, uh, things like that. But again, that's something we're gonna fix. Uh, one of the cool things for me as principal, when I walk around the school, teachers have even, um, modified their classrooms in terms of when they're using technology. So for example, they'll create like a big U, so like the teacher's in the middle so they can scan around quickly and look around and see what every student's doing on their laptop. Uh, and also, again, it's classroom management. If a student's playing a game, you know, when they're supposed to be doing something else, that's inappropriate. Uh, they shouldn't be doing that, even as well as home. If a kid's using their laptop that's district-provided to play a game, uh, Nico, as she said in the first few days of school, they told the kids, you're not supposed to be doing that. It's for learning purposes only. So...
Can I add just one more thing about that? I think also it's, uh, it's worth, um, keeping in mind that we're at the very early stages of kind of re-establishing the culture in our school and, and our relationship to, um, how the kids and how our teachers leverage these devices. So that process is still in the early stages, but I, I feel like it's going really well considering we've had about two and a half months. Uh, a lot of that also has to do with the kids understanding responsible use. And that, uh, is what Nico was alluding to earlier when we want to talk about, um, looking at responsible, uh, responsible use policies as opposed to acceptable use policies, which put a little bit more of, uh, put a little bit more on the students to think about what they're doing. It's not so much about consequences, it's about, this is the right way to, to think about using technology. It's, uh, a responsible use policy is less about the district's responsibility and more about the students' responsibility when it comes to using those devices. And that, and that's part of a, a culture shift that comes about because we've introduced these devices, uh, into our community. I, I think it'll happen. It's just gonna take a little bit of time to happen.
Have any, um, parents opted out of the program?
Uh, no parents have opted out. Every kid's got a laptop.
So we went to, where was it, Lebanon, where they only had two?
Uh, we were up in Hanover. A couple of parents had decided to opt out from their one-to-one program, but we have not had that at all at our middle school.
But they do have the option if they want.
Oh, yeah. If a parent, and also if a parent said, listen, Jay, I don't want my student bringing this laptop home at night because it's a constant struggle because they're trying to play Donkey Kong. Um, I mean, that's, I mean, those are challenges. I mean, kids like video games and, you know, every parent knows, it might not be the laptop, it might be Xbox 360 or something else, or their cellphone where you have to, you know, create those parameters. But if, again, a parent said, Jay, I don't want my kid bringing the laptop home, no problem, they can keep it right at school and we'll charge it every night for them.
Do the, um, are they submitting homework online? I mean, through the laptop or they...
Yep.
Really?
Yep.
We also had another, uh, comment, um, a letter that was submitted to us from a parent concerned about the keyboarding skills. And I was just curious about, you know, that aspect.
We do, uh, I'm not an expert on this, but I know we do do keyboarding in third grade and we do some keyboarding, uh, Nico does through our 21st Century Life Skills program. We also have programs that are open for any parent or child to use outside of the classroom as well if they wanted to do it at home.
That was one of my favorite parts of third grade. They have these thing, covers that you can put over the keyboard so you can't see any of the letters and you have to try and type without looking at the letters. It's fun.
Denise, I often joke too, they've heard me say this, but if you have, uh, very awful keyboarding skills, there is a career for you. You can become a middle school principal. Uh, because when people see me keyboard, it's, it's something else.
Kenny?
Um, thank you for this and, um, I, you know, and I, I think we made the right decision as a board and this decision really came out of the cellphone discussion. And, uh, and if it's not, you know, if you're not ready to answer, I was just curious about a few things. One, um, some parents were concerned about communication. Were they able to...
Yep.
...get messages to their kids? Does that seem to be going okay?
Very, very well. Uh, the phones are busy, you know, in the office, particularly after school when seventh and eighth graders are trying to make new plans to do things. Uh, but it's been great, uh, you know, the bell-to-bell ban. I think I've had two cellphones in my office. Uh, one was actually today and there was one early in the year where, um, you know, a student that I have a lot of respect for just went to her locker and forgot. So again, two instances, that's it. It's been great.
And maybe an extension of that, um, and so it came about because of concern about what was going on with the school with cellphone. Do you, in you, in, in your wanderings about and going to the lunchroom and whatever, do you see difference? Do you see that kids are no longer walking around with phones, eating lunch with phones, being out in the field?
The lunchroom's a lot louder. I would say that.
Which is a good...
So, yep, it is, it is. I mean, the lunchroom was loud before, but I, I don't think removing cellphones from the school has been a bad thing at all. Uh, kids can still communicate with their parents and I can't emphasize enough how thrilled I am about, you know, having this one-to-one in my school. It really, it's, it's very exciting. It's been very positive. The kids are very enthused about it. You see them walking around with their laptops coming in through the front doors and, and the hallways. It's, it's been such a pos, it's had such a positive impact on our school. And another thing is, is from this interview today with the Moth River is, now the bottom line is my teachers can use technology whenever they choose to use it. They don't, they don't have to use it for their lessons. We have, still have kids writing and reading writing journals, you know, but now teachers can use it whenever they want to use it. And the amount of planning time that sent it around, teachers trying to figure out when they had the laptops available, that's been, that's gone. So, yeah, I'm thrilled. I really am.
Great.
I just wanted to make a comment and, uh, one thing that really impressed me was, and a concern I had when we made the vote last spring is how little lead time we were giving you folks to do a major shift in your school. But I think, I think I speak for, well, I speak for myself, but I think the general sense that, that that presentation that you folks made gave us real confidence. You know, we hear a lot of presentations, but I think that was one of the most convincing ones we've, we heard, at least certainly I've heard. And then your ability to be flexible and innovative and to take, to, to make it work in such a short period of time, I think speaks to just the, the kind of, um, innovative spirit of the middle school and the flexibility and, you know, kind of willingness to take that on. I think that was just great.
I appreciate the compliment, but I was very confident when you decided that last year, that this would work and it would work very well. And I mean, there's two great examples right here that I knew that, you know, they're forward-thinking people, they would get this right in terms of the deployment, and my staff was ready. So, thanks, Tom.
Well, I was just, I had a comment from a parent. Oftentimes when you think of Oyster River, it's a relatively wealthy district and you think that it's no big deal for parents to buy a computer, even if they have three kids and they have to buy three computers. Because the computer use really is pretty significant now, particularly for homework that I've seen moving from middle school to high school. And so they were like, this has been a real good thing for them because it's given them access to, to technology. And the other comment I have, uh, of course, is what did you learn from this? But what I think was a really wise decision district-wise is the technology committee really integrates all three levels in a problem-solving manner so that the lessons that are currently being learned from the middle school, which really is at the cutting edge, are disseminating to the other levels pretty seamlessly so that it makes the next rollouts likely to be more successful. I think my only real concern is that right now, particularly the eighth graders, uh, they each have this laptop, they're using it, it's become a real ingrained part of their day, and they're gonna move to the ninth grade and we're not quite ready for the implementation of the ninth grade. And we're gonna have a temporary hole that opens up. And I think that will be the real challenge for us as we move forward next year. How do we adapt to that, uh, when everybody's used to it?
Right. I can't answer that, but I know the eighth grade students will be ready.
Yeah.
And I have no doubt there'll be a lot of teachers at the high school sooner than later ready as well. And, you know, how do you do it right? Talk to these two people, but I've already told Suzanne that, uh, she can employ them at the high school, they need to stay at the middle school, so...
So Al, just so you know, that's a conversation we're having at administrative level.
Anything else?
Questions, comments? Well, thank you so much.
And thank you.
Really appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the decision on the middle school building site. This was an issue a couple meetings ago and we had to wait till we got the, um, the results of the testing of the building site, in which we've had the report from Ron. So, uh, it seemed to me that we're probably at a point where if planning is to go forward, the architect needs to know where that planning, where that building is gonna be placed. And so, um, so we're gonna open up a discussion, you know, about the decision to build, uh, on the middle school site.
Do we need a motion to go to discussion?
Well, I think, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion, I think that's a good way to start.
If making a motion on a particular site?
Yeah, I think, I mean, essentially, we have two choices. We could, uh, we have the, the Goss property site, which we, was identified as a possibility, and then we had the, uh, the current site. Those are the, pretty much the two options that came out of the facilities committee, the year-long facilities committee. So I think that's pretty much the choice that's presented to us.
So I make a motion to, uh, continue on planning on building the new middle school on the current property?
Okay, moved by, um, Brian? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? Okay, so we have it on, the motion on the table, discussion. Uh, just one thing that, that didn't come out in, um, Ron's presentation. We, we talked earlier about what happens if you do find something that costs money to, to fix in terms of excavation. And there is a contingency of, I think it's $3 million.
1.8 million.
1.8 million. So that if something comes up, there is some money to, to take care of that. He doesn't anticipate that and certainly that, nothing of that count, that magnitude, but there is that, so that's something that, just to throw into the conversation. Al?
So I know, I mean, both sites reside in Durham and it's like, uh, one of my other gigs is sitting as a Durham town counselor. And so you, we become familiar with what is Durham's strategic plan or what is our land use plan. And so I think what we've gone over, like, educational considerations about classroom size and all that, but I think one of the important considerations to throw in is how does the school fit into the community and fit into the community's plan? And so I think it's pretty clear that the Goss site is not really consistent with what Durham's vision is in terms of our land use. And I say that because, uh, the University of New Hampshire right now is working on the West Edge, which is just before that property, working to try to build out a university-private partnership. And so Durham has very few really developable, developable big properties left. Goss really ties into that vision of the West Edge. It gives more flexibility in terms of what you can build there, particularly if it involves something like light industry. So that's the first part. When you also look at where we're looking in terms of, uh, master plan, we're really looking towards more of a vibrant downtown. And by that, I mean, uh, we want, uh, businesses down there, we want a mix of students and adults. And putting a middle school there then in proximity to the university, to the high school, to the library, and to the downtown businesses is more in line of what we're envisioning. The third thing is a consideration long-term about revenue that comes in to, uh, to both the towns and to the school district. Uh, when you look at the development, I think that, uh, again, uh, the technology drive area, the Goss property offers much more flexibility in terms of development. Part of your discussion is selling the current middle school for, I believe it was about 1.8 million dollars and trying to redevelop that, which is in actually the rural zone district of the town, will be a really challenging thing to develop. The question is, what would go in there? Uh, it would probably have to have a residential component. In theory, it may have to have then a commercial component below it, which would require likely for the town to come up with changes in zoning, which is a challenge. And I can say that because I'm one of the sponsors right now of changes in zoning occurring in the commercial district of Durham. So I think it would be very difficult to come up with something that is of a similar revenue stream than the Goss property does. The other consideration is the minute that you buy a piece of Goss that comes off the tax roll. That begins to cost both the district and the community's, uh, revenue. And until such point that you can actually sell and develop the, uh, the middle school property, uh, we're at a loss in terms of revenue. So I think, uh, the current site is much more in line with the thinking of where Durham is going. Not that that's the only consideration, but I think if you're going to try to build a $45 million school and you need to get, uh, a lot of the community's support, I think it's a challenge to get, uh, get Durham's support for something that really is not consistent with its, its land use.
Other comments?
Well, not to mention if we do go with the Goss site, that's a separate, that would have to go on the ballot this coming year, correct?
I think that would have to go in the ballot and have to get approved. And given the kind of a feeling, I think, in the community to have, to have it on-site, I think it's, it's, you know, passing that could be a very hard, very difficult thing.
Exactly, and if we, and if we don't...
If you go down that route and it failed, then, you know...
We're back to square one.
Because, because if it passes, you're still at a year, you know, you're a year later than you do if you're building on-site. But if that doesn't pass, you know, what do you do? Go back and, you know, you know, you're, you're really kind of pushing it down. And every year you push it back, it's, it's 4%. So 4% of, of, what, 46 million, so it's something like 1.8 million, just for the same thing. So...
I just feel building off, my personal belief is I think building off-site is just, there's too many risks involved and too many variabilities. I'd like to stick where we are. Plus, I think it's much easier to bring, I know, one of the first questions I asked was bringing the kids in as an educational experience of the whole process. And I think it would be a lot easier with it being there, um, than being, having shipped them down-site. And not to mention, it's gonna be a huge difference in the, the bus routes and...
Yeah.
And we already have the letter in here that the traffic is probably gonna be a major issue. So that was why I'm, um, prefer to be on the current site.
Okay. Other comments?
I want to make sure we're thinking about not just this building project, but where we're gonna be in 20 or 30 years. All three towns have taken a, um, a very long-term view and a very proactive view of, of land conservation. As Al said, there's not a lot of developable properties left in Durham. And it's our job to think about where that leaves the school district for the long game. And we know that the current site for the middle school does not meet the current state recommendations per site size. This site for the high school, we're already talking about, we don't have enough parking, we don't have, we need to build new tennis courts, field's in use all the time. Is this site even adequate for the long run? So if we are going to say we're gonna build here, I think that what we're saying is we're going to stay on this campus forever, for our lifetimes. And how does that fit with potential growth and, and what this looks like, um, you know, when all of our kids are out of school?
So can I answer the growth part for Durham? So the identified developable locations for Durham are two right now. One is a revitalization of the central business district, which is, in fact, why we have zoning going on, renovate the buildings that are occurring on Main Street. The second is technology drive. That really, those are really our major developable properties. The thought is, develop where you really can to reap the revenue of it, to allow us not only to have conservation lands, but to maintain our conservation lands. Because when you have, it's not enough just to have that property, you have to maintain them, and that's what our land stewardship does. So for the long game, the Goss property, we feel, is probably better suited for development, not the school. So, and by that, I mean, the long game is also not just size, it's revenue to maintain your school system. The Goss property as a developable property, other than the school, I think, probably is a better opportunity to generate more revenue to make our school system sustainable.
Kenny?
So, you know, Mike, I think you make a very valid point. I think we need to make this decision thinking both of now and the future. And I think one of the things that gives me comfort in thinking that our current sites will be adequate really is the demographics. And I really, you know, we hear from Denise with long-range planning, we see our numbers. I'm more concerned that we will be having a downsizing in how many kids are in our schools rather than an explosive growth. So I kind of feel that our size is going to be adequate. Certainly, there are problems, as you note, with parking, but there's also the synergy that I think we would lose by moving off-site. And I think Al gave maybe some technical reasons, but the kind of synergy of someone taking math at a high school level when they're in middle school. We heard someone speak today that she would like that advanced for language arts, which, to me, makes a lot of sense. So there's these synergies that the two schools have together. If we separate them, we're going to lose that. There's also the sense of a school being a community. And Goss is not a community, and it will never be a community. And there's really something special about watching those kids biking to middle school, walking to middle school, those kids leaving middle school, walking to the library, whether they're Lee or Madbury kids. And when the kids are in eighth grade, they walk downtown, and they go to the candy shop or they go wherever. And that's a really vital part of a community that extends, to me, the school day in a very meaningful way. If we're out at a place like Goss, no matter how warm and fuzzy that school is, the school day ends, and then kids are out in the middle of nowhere, on a bus, there's not that connectivity of, hey, do you want to walk over to my house after school? And I think that community is so important, and I think the tie to the high school, is that I'm able to overlook maybe more room at Goss, to think that this is, this is a special place. And MoHaramit has that en masse ways, so integral to the Lee community. I think that's where schools belong, are in neighborhoods, not in an industrial setting.
I just want to say that...
I know in the past, I don't, I don't know the exact numbers, but I know in the past, Oyster River has seen, like, exponential growth periods and then really steep drop-offs in numbers of students. So, I mean, what, I don't know if that means anything for the future at all, but that's what the pattern has been in the past. And I also, I, as a student here, really value having the two schools next to each other. Like, I, my brother was at the high school when I was at the middle school, and I would walk down to the field and wait for him, and then he'd walk across the field and we'd walk home together. It was really nice to be connected to older kids while still being among the younger kids. And I really strongly want to emphasize what our public comment said today about accelerating subjects other than math. Because when I was in middle school, throughout the whole process, I was bored to tears. I, it just was so aggravating. And I really wish I could have had a way to excel. And having that, the high school right next to the middle school, I think, is a great opportunity to start implementing more acceleration plans across the curriculum.
Great, thank you. I just want to say that in terms of the site, in terms of looking at how the site could be reused, one of the things that makes that site look so small is the, is the, just the size of the footprint of the middle school, and the way it just eats up pretty much all that land. And when you look at how that land could be used in a more efficient way, and have a smaller footprint building down towards the marsh area, it just opens up a lot of space. And I remember, I remember when Steve Blatt was here, he showed just how that space could be used, and you thought, whoa, you know, it could really be different. And so, would it be better if it had three or four more acres? I think, sure, but I think that land could be used efficiently in the, talking about, maybe a three-story middle school, which is more efficient and much, on a much smaller footprint. That opens up a lot of land, so you don't have this three football fields of land taken up by the building itself. Yeah?
Another important issue we need to think about is, you know, security and all, and if we ever had to evacuate either the high school or the middle school for something unprecedented, we usually send them to the other school. Let's say there was a major power failure or something, and we had to take all the middle school kids, we'd probably have to march them to the high school and have them get picked up at the high school for security reasons, because, whatever. I mean, I think that's an issue that kind of has to be put into the mix as well, because you won't have that luxury if you go off-site. So if something ever did happen, we can very easily go between the two schools and have much more control of the flow of people and where they go than we would otherwise.
Denise?
The other thing I'm thinking of, and I don't know if this has been part of the discussion so far for the new middle school, but in terms of maybe having another turf field, which, you know, is, then obviously you can get more use out of it, which we have found with the high school, and, you know, so I don't know if that...
I think it is, right?
Right. So, yeah. It's in the budget, it's in that budget to be able to build, so one of the fields or whatever would be a turf field. So that would address somewhat, you know, the concerns about, which I hear, I totally understand, about having the sports area that you need.
On a side note, too, another auditorium, which would take a little bit of the weight off of the high school auditorium.
Yeah.
And use it there, which could be used for multiple, at the same, on the same night.
Yeah.
Other comments? We're ready to vote? Okay, the motion is to, could we have the motion read again, just, do you have?
Brian, you have the motion to go live in the Goss school on the current property site, separate the building from the state.
Okay. Was it to plan the building? Okay. Was it to plan?
It was to plan on the building being on the current site.
Okay.
Why don't we use the word select?
Select.
What?
We select to build on the current site.
Okay. Okay, is that...
We select the current site as the place to build the...
Select the current site as the place to build.
A discussion be without words, man.
Okay. I think, so I think we have the motion clear now. So ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor, all opposed? One opposed, Michael's opposed. Okay? So we've made that call. Strategic plan?
Really briefly, I sent you out the draft of the operations plan, and I'll send you out the draft of the academic plan by the next meeting. Todd and I and Catherine and Sue Caswell have been working every spare minute to get to a place where we can get these drafts to you. The purpose of getting the drafts to you is just to give you time with them. I mean, there's, there's a lot to them. It wasn't designed for us to have a conversation tonight unless you want to have, you want clarification questions, but it's really to kind of give it to you. At some point, Tom and Denise and I will set up a time to workshop the strategic plan. We'll have to figure out that. I suspect it would be after the holidays. So this gives you plenty of time to kind of read what's there, jot down your questions, and be ready for a workshop. This is, there's a lot there.
Denise?
The only thing with the way this one was set out is, I could only open it one page at a time. I'm not sure, it was, did you, I don't know if anybody else had that trouble, but it was just difficult in terms of the formatting.
Michael raised that issue. I just want to say that I deliberately did that because the document is so big that to scan through it as a whole, I thought, would be cumbersome. But, Michael, you got it as a complete document today. Did you find that easier to use?
I very much prefer it.
Okay, then I'll send out the complete document, all attached, like I did for Michael today. And so the idea was, and obviously, my idea was not a good one, since you're the second board member who's raised it, was just to make it in manageable pieces. So I have no problem sending it out. Maybe when I do the academic piece, I'll send it out both ways, just in case you want to use it as kind of like chapters in the book, and then if you want to see the whole, you can see the whole. Does that make sense?
It's in there.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thanks for the feedback.
So the first year of this is the 1920 school year?
Yes.
How are we accommodating the proposed or the draft strategic plan in the budget when we're not going to have the strategic plan done until after the budget needs to be done?
Well, I'm assuming that the highlights of the strategic plan will be relatively constant. I'm not thinking you're going to take what I give you and turn it upside down and reinvent. So I'm pretty confident, for example, well, the new middle school is part of the strategic plan, of course, that's pretty easy. The SEL component that you'll be getting in the academic piece is predictable, because we've been working on mental health and wellness right along. The multi-tier support system is another part of the academic plan that we've been working on, and that'll be part. So I think it's pretty safe for me, Michael, to broadly address the upcoming year without having it finalized and blessed by the board. Because I think when you see the academic piece, you're going to say, of course, that should be, you know, that should be what we should be seeing. So I don't think that, unlike the first strategic plan where we were kind of pulling ourselves up by the bootstraps because we didn't have one to build off of, this plan is built off the current plan. So there's logical succession to the things we've been talking about and doing over these last several years that'll carry into the next several years.
Right. And some things, some things are going to impact the proposed budget more than others. Categories that are curriculum-specific may not be as impactful as things that are new programs that involve staffing or facilities, things.
Exactly. Yeah. So I think you'll be comfortable when you see it. You know, we talk, we'll talk about it a little bit tomorrow, too. But there's nothing radical in terms of, there really should be no surprises for the body when they see it. I mean, everything should be making perfectly good sense based on our time together in these last years and where we're pointing ourselves into the future, so.
And then you had, at the, I think, the last meeting, you asked the board to support you in writing a memorandum so that the three, the police, the three different communities work together, and we have a draft of that.
Yeah, so that draft is in your packet, and I've addressed it to the police chiefs and the fire chiefs, with CC to the selectmen of Lee and Madbury and the council in Durham. This letter is a direct result of the homeland security audits that were done in all of our schools now, to date. And in every single one of those homeland security audits, the recommendation was to have a interoperability agreement slash memorandum of understanding among all police departments and fire departments relative to servicing all of our schools should any of our schools need support. So basically, what that means is, we'd be asking the department in Lee to go on record that they would come to Durham and Madbury. We'd be asking the departments in Durham to be on record to come and support Lee and Madbury. We'd be asking the departments in Madbury to be on record to come and support Lee in Durham. The school system in Exeter has five separate school boards and six different towns, and they hired a retired police chief of Exeter, Chief Kane, to build this interoperability memorandum of agreement among six different, five different school boards in six different towns. We have one school board in three towns. So this should be a very doable exercise, and I'm hoping that the police chiefs and fire chiefs will be supportive of this, and we can pull them together sooner rather than later, as you can see in the letter. I've actually suggested some dates for, for this meeting. And I also would be reaching out to Chief Kane in Exeter. I asked the Exeter school system if that would be an option, and they've said absolutely. So we could bring in a chief who's done it and helped, help us build this memorandum of understanding among the three towns. So the draft is there. I'm open to any comments or suggestions. I see Kenny's got his red pen out, so here we go.
I think the letter is excellent, and I just wanted to also give kudos, because you're including in the letter the UNH police, which is very important as well, because they're very strategically located.
Well, even more so, Ken, if Suzanne needed to vacate the high school and the middle school wasn't an option, our backup is the university. So we have an understanding with the university of, or if both the middle school and high school had to get off of Code Drive and go on to the university, that is an option that exists in our current plan. So that's why it's critical that the chief at UNH be part of the conversation.
Yeah, I think it's excellent. Thank you for doing that.
Do you need authorization?
I have a quick question.
Because you asked me to draft it. Brian?
How is that, how, is this more of a plan than it is a mutual aid agreement? Because I know they have mutual aid agreements with each other.
Well, we don't have mutual aid agreements with each other. Some of us have mutual aid agreements and some of us don't.
Of the three towns?
Yes.
Really?
Yes. And, yeah. And so this is actually saying, as a school system, where we would love to have a mutual aid agreement among the three towns to support the school system.
Which would also support the other town.
The three towns. You would think that if they do it for us, they'll do it for each other, but this is really about us.
Okay.
So can we have a motion to authorize Dr. Morse to send this letter? Brian?
Make a motion to authorize Dr. Morse to send the letter.
Moved by Brian. Is there a second? Second by Al. Further discussion on this? Very good. All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor.
Okay, I'm going to give myself an A plus, Ken.
Yeah, passed the test.
I think it's an E.
Exceeds?
Yes.
All right. I'll take it.
Super tennis evaluation. I think the first step in the past has been to ask you to write yourself evaluations, so I'm not sure what a good date would be for that, but, because we have pretty much until into January to replete it, so, but, two weeks, four weeks?
How about if, how about if I have it done by the second meeting in December, just based on the workload that I see in front of us?
Sure. I think that would be fine, okay? And then we might have a non-public that night, just to take the next steps. Okay, already approved the middle school site. We have, you know, motion to approve two Oyster River Middle School maternity leave absences. I think we could maybe do those as a block unless somebody wants to separate those out. Pretty much similar request. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the two Oyster River Middle School maternity leave absences, one from January to the end of the school year, and the other from March to the end of the school year.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second? Second by Brian. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep. Those maternity leaves are approved. Motion to approve the Oyster River High School list of winter coaching, list of winter coaches and volunteers. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the list of winter coach and volunteers for the high school.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second? Second by Al. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Those positions are approved. So we have list of policies, and Denise, I don't know if you want to take us through these?
Well, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for, do them as a block unless anybody has, wants to split one out. All right, so I motion to approve policy JICFA student hazing, policy EHAA computer security, email and internet communications, and policy IHBG home education for second read.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dan. Questions about these? Okay. All those in favor approving these three policies for second read, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Those policies are approved. Okay. School committee updates. Do you want to say something about the manifests? Do you want to say something about the manifests?
Al is the chair tonight.
Okay.
Oh, you want me to actually say something?
You do the chair.
Oh, wow, man. It went great.
Other committees? Congratulations on doing so well. Other committees that have met? I think the, or RESPA-DIX, the negotiating meeting is the 19th, is that right?
Yeah, we moved it. So we have another meeting for negotiations set up for the end of the month.
Okay.
See if it's in my calendar yet. We just had to talk to them today. It was another oversight on my part, not theirs. I'll get you those dates tomorrow. Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth at 1:30.
So we're approaching the time to really have to wrap that up.
Yes.
This has been a fairly length, compared to other negotiations, this has been a fairly lengthy one. And I think we're maybe within striking distance, but...
I think so. I think that, you know, the process, though lengthy, I think it was getting to know a new negotiator on their side and working through some issues that we haven't seen typically from a RESPA in the past. And so we signed off on, gee, it must be about nine tenths of the language the last time. I think we have some hanging language and then just, just a little bit of hanging language. And then we made our proposal on salary and benefits. They're contemplating our offer, and so I think we're really close to coming to the end. If it's not this meeting, for sure, one more meeting.
Other committees?
I just had a question, and realizing it's not a, there's no rush, but we talked about the orchard drive-in, was wondering if Morse, you have time to follow up about?
Yep. So Dennis and I are meeting Friday morning for breakfast and going over it. He did send me an apology email by the next day because I had said it was a $100,000 offer that he made, and he corrected me and said it was 150. He sent me an email the next day and said, you were right. He said, I was thinking I had offered 150, but I didn't. And so I wanted to make sure you knew that. And I said, there's no problem, Dennis. So we'll have breakfast on Friday. Sue has gathered a bunch of contacts for me, so I'll talk through Dennis and those contacts, and we'll start going down the path to see if we can get some nominal amount for the property and put it into a conservatorship.
Okay. And certainly, I'd be happy to share some contacts.
What are you doing Friday for breakfast?
Probably, what time is your breakfast?
7:30.
I'll be at work.
Okay.
Sorry. But I can give you...
Yeah, that'd be great, Ken. Thank you.
Did we have any headway with the student senate? I know you guys are in the middle of so much right now, but I just don't want it to be off the radar.
Yeah, no, I was just writing my note, writing myself a note to do that. I had talked to them recently, but we had a student senate meeting the same day that National Honor Society had a meeting, so there were only five people at that meeting. So...
Whatever works for you guys.
Yeah, I've got to keep asking Mr. Kangella when works for him.
Okay. So public comment, is there, it looks like?
Sorry, one last thing. I also wanted to thank Sarah Kuhn, who's running the middle school musical this year, which will be in January. Just so you guys are aware, she had 90 kids show up for the original process. I think there's still something like 85 who were involved in the process. She has triple cast the show so that each kid who's got a lead is a lead for one of the three major performances and then also one of the school-based performances and is reaching out for additional support. I know she's got some other teachers in the school and other parents working collaboratively with her, but just so you guys are aware, this is not a small undertaking, and I think it shows how many kids in our district are passionate about drama and how much we need more support for that. Thanks.
What is the musical?
I just want to say, Lauren, that you put that issue in front of us last year, and we did bring in additional support, so.
Yes, thank you. And clearly, she went from 40 kids last year to 90 this year. I think maybe it's something that should get added to the curriculum.
What is the musical?
They're going to do the Little Mermaid, I think it's Little Mermaid Jr. as opposed to the full production. I know it's Little Mermaid, I don't know the exact specifics. And it'll be, the performances are in January. She delayed it till January to make it so that parents didn't have so many obligations in December to try to balance it out, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're meeting tomorrow at the Lee complex for the budget workshop and the other meetings, and also we'll have a meeting next week, because we decided not to go right before Thanksgiving. So we'll be meeting next week, but we'll be meeting here, right?
Yes, here next week.
So it's not at...
Not Massway.
It's not at Massway, it's here. And then the December, first December meeting will be at Massway, that's the place.
December 5th would be Massway.
Yeah. And you're off to...
Off to Washington on Tuesday.
Off to Washington for the superintendent of the year.
The last hurrah as superintendent of the year.
Well, congratulations. Enjoy your trip.
You still haven't brought the bell in.
Yep.
Don't forget your snow goggles for the champagne.
Exactly. What did you just say?
You need your goggles for the champagne.
Yeah, exactly.
Burns.
Thanks, Dan. It's friends like you.
So motion to adjourn?
I'm up for adjourn.
Moved by Al, second by Brian. All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. We are adjourned.